Okay, we have, oops. We have a proclamation tonight for Martin Luther King Junior Day, and Councilmember Barksdale is going to read it. Is there anybody here to receive that? Great. Can you speak after? Or do you have anything you'd like to say, I should ask? Okay, perfect. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Junior devoted his life to serving others, reminding us that human progress is neither automatic nor inevitable. Every step toward the goal of justice requires sacrifice, suffering, and struggle, the tireless exertions and passionate concern of dedicated individuals. And whereas many inequities existing during Dr. King's lifetime still persists today, still persist today, as demonstrated through the disparate outcomes of the global pandemic and continued social and racial injustices of our time. And whereas, when Dr. King spoke at the March on Washington, he described a fierce urgency of now to take action toward equality. More than 50 years later, his words have an enduring relevance in our time. And whereas, on Martin Luther King Junior Day, we honor and celebrate this civil rights icon and visionary leader whose resistance to injustices, including racial segregation, economic disparities, employment discrimination, and denial of the right to vote, raised awareness and spurred action to expand access to opportunity and structural inequities for all people. And whereas, the city of Bellevue is committed to ensuring access, equity, inclusion, and opportunity, sharing the belief that the time is now to act with swift urgency to deliver on the promise of Dr. King's mission to foster a beloved community. And whereas, we honor Dr. King's legacy with an annual local celebration and health fair and a national day of service to remind us that we are stronger when we march forward together. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim January 16th, 2023, Martin Luther King Junior Day in Bellevue, and urge all residents to visit www.mlkday.gov to learn more about service opportunities across our country, and to visit www.bellviewi.gov, where you can register to attend a virtual celebration and health fair in commemoration of Dr. King's legacy as we work together to build a more just, peaceful, and prosperous society for all.
Thank you. Would you like to do a picture? All right, let's do it. Councilmember Stokes would like to do an addendum to this. Go ahead.
I would just like to say I really appreciate the comments today and this remembrance of this just amazing individual. My contact, besides a lot of other things, is I was in law school in DC at the time, and I did go down to the memorial, to the Jefferson. I was back in the back of the room, but it was just amazing, and it's a huge impact on me. And both in the 40th year and the 50th year anniversary, I happened to be in DC and attended that as well. So this is something that means a lot to me personally, but it's always great to have it recognized and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next up, we have oral communications. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are two pre-registered speakers. And before I start calling names, I'll remind the public that oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes. One speaker will be, or three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And you will be given up to three minutes to make your comments. And our first speaker, actually, both of them are joining us here in person. Our first speaker is Steve Williams. Mr. Williams has a PowerPoint to go with his comments, so we will get that up. And Mr. Williams, I'm going to time you on my phone, and I will let you know when you get to three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Steve Williams. I'm a volunteer with the East Side Heritage Center here in Bellevue. And tonight, I wanted to share with you the historical significance of the Swanson property at the south end of Lake Mont Boulevard, next to Coal Creek Park. Today, the land is owned by Isola, and they are proposing to put 35 expensive and exclusive houses there, which will effectively block the wildlife corridor, eliminate the horse pasture and the barns, and the 100-year-old Swanson homestead. In 1928, this is what was there. If we can back up. Okay. A town of over 300 homes and 1,000 people living there during World War I, when there was so much demand for coal. So Swanson House is the little black rectangle above the U-shaped hotel there, next to Lake Mont Boulevard. It all started at the time of our Civil War in 1863. Abraham Lincoln was our president. They were using black cannon powder to blast the coal underground. They were also using mules to haul the carts and had whale oil lamps on their caps to see. By 1878, two of the first coal trains in the area were hauling coal to the docks in Seattle for shipment to San Francisco by square-rig sailing ships. They had money from the '49 gold rush. We had a natural resource fuel that they desperately needed. And shipping coal is what made Seattle a dominant west coast seaport. 1894, we had a nice photograph of the mine right there under the Swanson property at the horseshoe bend in the road on the south end of Lake Mont Boulevard. The buildings on the left there, the company store and the sawmill, were on the Swanson property. Underground, the miners were now over a quarter mile deep under the property, drilling and blasting on a 40-degree slope. All of our coal seems still down to the north at 40 degrees. Here we go again. By the turn of the century, we finally had electricity to see by underground and also replaced the mules hauling the carts underground. By 1909, the state mining inspector said we were producing over $2 million worth of coal annually. And the United States government said that Pugit Sound was the third greatest coling port in all of the United States. So this area is really significant for state and Seattle history. Community was really important to the miners, so they had their own brass band to perform at weddings, funerals, and baseball games. Education was very important to the wives, so they formed their own school district and funded the construction of a four-room schoolhouse in 1914. And by 1919, this is what our Lake Mont Boulevard looked like. The company store in the foreground.
Mr. Williams, I oppose. You have reached your three-minute mark.
Okay.
Well, shoot, we're just getting to the good part. Can you maybe send us this presentation by email?
Yes, we can manage it.
Sorry, we do have a copy of it. We'll get that out to the council.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay, our final pre-registered speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you. Zikhai. Demnazi Gestapo, democracy fascist, a map in psycho. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I am candidate for Bellevue Council 23. So I want to speak about something absolutely critical. Number one, these absolutely idiotic rules about public comment. So if somebody can go first, and somebody can go second. What does this mean? You know we have a freedom of speech? First come, first served. You're doing this for six years. So I speak right now to 150,000 people who live in this city. And these 150,000 idiots know we have a constitution, freedom of speech, and everybody supposed to be equal, not matter what. Number two, I demand open a Bellevue page, you know what this means, in government, and put everybody who go for election for 23 now. And I demand forum every two weeks. My experience with forum for last 10 election so simple, and maybe pay a money, by August, we all out. We very happy when we have one, I repeat, one forum for these two months, from May to August. One. I never see this in many times, ever one, and always for one hour. That's what is pointing. So right now, I want to speak about Martin Luther King. He's my hero for 50 years from beginning. My hero number one. He absolutely equal to me, like Abraham Lincoln, George Washington, or Donald Trump. These are people who move planet in front, make us life better. And every time what has come, I live here 25 years, and every time what has come to Martin Luther King, then it's always black talking about this. What does this belong to black? Martin Luther King belonged to everybody. And I speak right now because he's a bring a principle, you know what this means, what is good for everybody. So I demand stopping this racism because when only black talking about Martin Luther King, this is pure, pure racism. Everybody supposed to be talking. Everybody supposed to be right talking about American hero. Martin Luther King, one from best American hero. So I right now speak to everybody who listen to me. This council chamber need be clean totally, you know what this mean? Because I come to this place for 20 years, and look what they did with our city. It's totally destroyed for 20 years. And right now, Amazon commies will be dead, Bellevue, totally. Everything will be dead. Housing, transportation, crime, et cetera. So stand up, Bellevue citizen. We smart, we good, even it clean this chamber in 23 totally. To the bones. Thank you very much.
That is the end, excuse me, that is the end of our pre-registered list. At this point, I would ask if there's anyone joining us here in council chambers or online that would like to make comment to the council. Please raise your hand if you do use the raise hand function online. Mayor, I do not see any hands. That would close oral comms.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the report of our city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Welcome back after the holiday season. I have one item under the manager's report this evening, and that is a quick synopsis of the 2023 Washington State Legislative Session that I believe started off today. The work that the city team has been doing in anticipation of this session will be talked about this evening. With that, I'm going to turn over to Jesse Atkins, who is the Chief of External Affairs.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, it's great to be with you this evening. Today does mark the first day of the legislative session, so I just wanted to come before you for a few minutes to mark day one of the 105-day session, which we call often the long session. As I've mentioned to you before, this is the long session compared to the off-years because they spend a lot of time working to build the three budgets, operating capital and transportation, and to really undertake a lot of consideration of more substantive policy issues. So we'll have a longer period of time to be able to really talk back and forth with our members and to really examine more carefully a lot of different policy issues. Over the weekend, I was able to track down a draft schedule, part of what they do, just like you saw happening today in Congress, is they adopt their rules for the coming session. So adopting the cutoff dates is part of what they do these first couple of days. It looks like, just to give you a sense of kind of the markers down the field, the policy cutoffs will be on February 17th, a week later on the 24th of February for the fiscal committees, and then House of Origin cutoff on March 18th. That's when all the House bills have to be out of the House and over to the Senate. And then likewise, the opposite House cutoff will be April 14th. And then they'll adjourn, signee die if everything goes well, on April 23rd. You're going to find all this information and another summary of this week in writing to you at the end of this week. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of a preview of how much time they're going to be down there, kind of talking about things that will have really direct import and relevance to this council. Just as a reminder, in last year's elections, the Democratic caucuses both picked up one seat in the House and in the Senate. So that's a status quo majority for us, both in the House and Senate. Gives them a slightly wider majority. One thing that we'll keep an eye out for, they did some reorganization in December. And now that gives, even on some committees, but not universally, a little bit of a wider margin on the committee makeup as well. So that's where we'll be for the next six weeks, is bills will be being heard and voted at a committee. And that's where we'll see that conversation take place at the committee level. We've been working really closely with our 41st and 48th District legislators since you all adopted our legislative agenda in November. That gave us a great charge to start meeting with them and really building support and answering questions around our top priorities. We, during the December Committee Assembly, met with some of our members. We also met with the balance of the members over Zoom throughout the month of December. And just last week, Mayor Robinson joined the majority of the 48th and 48th Districts to just have a quick conversation and preview to really kick off the session ahead. And that went real well. I know I'm preaching to the choir here about our delegation, but we are exceptionally lucky. They are a well-established, really well-connected group of folks from the 41st and 48th, and just among the six of them, given the committee reorganization, they represent five committee chairs. That's House Consumer Protection and Business, Senate Housing, House Post-Secondary Education and Workforce, Senate Early Learning and K-12 Education, and House Human Services, Youth and Early Learning. Also, one of them sits on the very, very powerful Senate Rules Committee, which really acts as the gatekeeper to what makes it to the Senate floor. And we have somebody both on Senate Ways and Means and House Appropriations. So the Bellevue delegation is a really well-positioned group of individuals, and we're really very fortunate. And you've seen the fruits of that in the past. Your ongoing engagement comes in a number of different places. I want to thank you again for your work to help us craft that agenda because that really is our compass as we go forward into the session and as the bills start flying fast and furious, which they already have. And then during the session, I am going to send you a weekly synopsis at a pretty high clip. I know you're really busy, but I do want to give you kind of a little bit of a snapshot into what's happening every week in Olympia. So you'll get that. I'll come here on roughly a monthly basis to talk to you at the dais. And then, of course, myself, Lacey Jane Wolf and Brianna Murray, our contract lobbyists, are all a team here to help you be successful and feel like you're well apprised. So if anything ever comes up, pop us a note or just give me a call. On behalf of our team, we're really excited to get going. We really want your engagement next month. If you're available for the AWC Action Days, that's going to be February 15th and 16th. Bright and early tomorrow morning, I'll send you an email with the information about the city action days. And I'll send you an electronic version of the agenda that you adopted in November as well. So you've got that handy right at the top of your inbox. So there'll be a lot of other opportunities. We, of course, will come back to you if we have questions where we need to really recalibrate where the city stands. But we're up and running and had a great call together as a team today to evaluate some of the hearings this week. And we're excited to get going. So I just wanted to kind of put that in the background for all of you that today we start marking off days on the calendar. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Anything else, Mr. Miyake?
That's in there, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, we're proud of our representation. Thank you. So next up, Councilmember Robertson is requesting an excusal for the January 17th council meeting. Is there a motion?
I move to excuse Councilmember Robertson from the January 7th regular city council meeting. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And then we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a study session item, two items tonight, actually. And I'm really excited about the first one. I want to give a, I know council members on, you're here virtually. I want to give you a big thumbs up for initiating this and really pushing to make sure that we kept this as a council priority and that we got it early going this year. So here we are, the beginning of the first quarter of this year, and as promised, you are here before us. So thank you very much, staff. Thank you, councilmembers on, for being the leader on this.
Thank you, Mayor.
So Mayor, this is an informational update this evening on the Safe Parking Pilot Program, as you were alluding to. Tonight's update will identify a lot of the work done today to prepare to launch this pilot program. A lot of work has gone into it by the staff here, many of those at the table this evening. And just by way of background, as you mentioned, it was a council priority identified with the goal of exploring a safe parking program as a part of the city's homelessness response. So joining us this evening is Bianca Segal, our Assistant Director of Citywide Policy and Programs. And to her left is Nico Chiano, Homeless Outreach Program Manager. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Bianca, for presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. We are really happy to be here presenting this item to you this evening to move forward the council priority regarding safe parking. And I'm going to turn it over to Nico to give our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and council. And thank you for the opportunity to provide this update on the Safe Parking Pilot Program that we are launching. This will be an information-only meeting. We'll be providing updates on the work we've done since receiving council guidance back in July. We'll start by providing a little bit of background about how we got here, talk about some of the program development that we've done over the last couple of months. We'll talk about the feedback that we've heard in the community and what they've told us they want to see. We'll name some of the details of the program, including the location and other pertinent elements of the program. We'll talk about how we hope to partner this program with some of the Liveable City Year work that took place starting in 2019 to provide other sites for safe parking. And we'll talk about the concrete steps that need to happen in order to launch this by the beginning of quarter two of 2023. So the city council identified safe parking as a priority. Council priority number 17 was to explore a safe parking program for homelessness response. In pursuit of that priority, city staff came to city council on July 11th and presented a number of different options for implementing a safe parking pilot program. And council directed staff to develop an implementation plan. In the intervening months, the city approved a $450,000 a year budget for each of 2023 and 2024 to implement a safe parking pilot. Development of this program could be said to have begun as early as 2019 with the city's partnership with the University of Washington through the Liveable City Year Project. That work looked into and ultimately recommended that the city support religious organizations who would like to run their own small safe parking programs and generated a guide for developing programs to use. Additionally, we had a Vehicle Residency Safe Parking Alternatives memo that offered different options for implementing safe parking and provided additional resource support, guidelines, and next steps. Staff conducted outreach to a number of different parties, which I'll describe in the next couple of slides. Staff additionally surveyed potential sites, ultimately deciding on the Lincoln Center. I'll tell you why a little later in the presentation. And finally, staff developed a program model and drafted a request for proposal. I'll talk about the steps to implementing that proposal at the end of this presentation. So we talked to a number of different safe parking providers in the community. They were, and also across the nation. They offered us guidance that informed how we will approach this program. We talked to residents in the community. We talked to community members who are concerned about individuals who are residing in their vehicles and heard that largely, the community is sympathetic to the needs of those who must resort to residing in their own vehicles, but desperately want to be able to offer a safe place for those individuals to go to. The ambiguity of a vehicle resident parking and living on the side of any given residential street is difficult for our residents to navigate at best. We heard from neighboring properties that neighbor the Lincoln Center, where we'd like to facilitate the safe parking program, both by going door-to-door and talking to businesses as we were able to encounter them, and also drafting and sending out formal notices. We talked to local nonprofits that serve individuals experiencing homelessness to both hear their feedback as we were developing the program and also to gauge their interest in potential program facilitation. I should name that finding a program operator has been one of the biggest difficulties that we've heard other municipalities that have already launched safe parking programs has encountered. But we've received pretty good feedback from the potential program operators. So that's been encouraging to hear, that there may be a program operator that will be willing to step up. And finally, we talked to individuals who live in the city of Bellevue who are experiencing homelessness and living in their cars right now. We wanted to make the time to center their voice, so I wanted to share a little bit of information regarding what they told us about living in their vehicles and potentially participating in safe parking. We talked to a number of individuals about their perspectives. And of the people we spoke to, one of the questions we asked was, would you reside in a safe parking program? Of the 15 vehicle residents who answered this particular question, only one said no. And that individual specified that they had recently left a safe parking program, which they felt very good about, but they wanted to continue their trajectory forward towards stable housing. So we heard largely from residents in the city of Bellevue who are living in their vehicles, that they do want a safe parking program. They do want somewhere to go. We also asked participants, what services do you need from a safe parking program? I'll note that many of the things that sort of rise to the top of this thought cloud that represents the participants' responses are things like bathrooms, running water, showers, garbage, security, basic things that any human being needs to survive and thrive. So recognizing that that's one of the things that participants or individuals living in their vehicles need, we want to recommend that the Lincoln Center be used as a safe parking site. The reason that we think the Lincoln Center is the best site is because it has many of the facilities that an ideal safe parking program needs. It has daily living facilities, things like showers, laundry, bathrooms, a space for preparing food. It has ample parking space. This picture is an overhead view of the Lincoln Center. That yellow square to the north or to the top of the picture represents 37,000 square feet of parking. It also has a relative seclusion. It's a little bit removed from, to the east, 116th Street. And as you can see, the Lincoln Center has the facilities that we would like to be able to offer. And red is the south end of the Lincoln Center building, which has the day center, which includes those laundry facilities and showers and bathrooms and kitchens and things that people living in their vehicles need. Congregations for the homeless currently occupies that space and uses that day center. They plan to vacate in the end of quarter one of 2023 and move to the permanent East Side Men's Shelter that the city has helped them to develop, after which point, we would plan to move our program in and begin offering safe parking. The timing actually works out quite nicely for us to be able to facilitate our RFP process and find a new provider and get started with the process. So once someone moves in, we'll offer a program whose primary purpose will be to find stable housing for vehicle residents. In measuring that purpose, we'll report on metrics that directly measure success of helping people to find stable housing, such as their housing status at exit from program and how long they were enrolled in the program before exiting to housing. And also metrics that reflect how good we are at helping people to get set up for stability, things like their income level, their employment status or their education status at time of departure. The population served will be any vehicular resident in any vehicle, passenger RV that they own. We'll ask program operators to develop a safety plan that will include 24/7 staffing availability, proactive communication with law enforcement, and identifying and implementing what onsite security features are necessary, things such as cameras, fencing, potentially hiring security personnel. We'll also ask them to develop a code of conduct that will help set participants up to be part of community and know what to expect of themselves and others. Explicit agreements will include prohibiting illegal activity, setting expectations for conduct on property and in the surrounding area, and establishing a means of engaging in respectful shared use of facilities and space for everyone involved in this community. As we're launching this program and as the safe parking program operator is getting started, they will also have the availability to provide assistance to other potential satellite safe parking sites. So as I mentioned earlier, the Liveable City Year work that the city engaged in with the University of Washington ultimately led to a recommendation of enabling religious organizations to facilitate safe parking programs on their property and provide support when starting up as needed. and provide support when starting up as needed. The safe parking program operator will be able to offer that support and that guidance and expertise by virtue of having facilitated our own program. What we've heard from religious organizations when we've spoken to them is that they are eager to provide support to those in the community that need it. They're interested in providing safe parking programs, but they feel that they may lack the expertise or guidance that they need to run some of the operations or provide the support to those who might participate in the program. So having this program operator would be a major benefit to those programs. Additionally, satellite safe parking sites can serve especially vulnerable populations and target services to those populations. So let's say a satellite site has five parking spots. Those five parking spots could all be offered to families with children. And in so doing, that parking program could focus on tailoring services to families with children and make sure that they're building a community that is conducive to those families with children succeeding and thriving and ultimately finding housing stability. So to get to the point where we're able to launch this program, we will immediately release a request for proposals for a pilot program operator. We will complete an environmental and land use review as required in order to be able to use the Lincoln Center for this property. We will evaluate the applicants that participate in the request for proposals and select a program operator. And after congregations for the homeless vacates the Lincoln Center, we will select a program, they will move in at the beginning of quarter two, and launch the pilot program. Moving forward, we'll conduct monthly reviews of program performance and continue to proactively tailor this program to the needs of the city of Bellevue based on what we learn. To wrap up, I want to bring back the voices of one of the individuals who is experiencing homelessness in the city of Bellevue and living in his car right now. For anonymity's sake, I'll just refer to him as John. John told me when I spoke to him, I'm approaching sixty. The odds for me are basically zero. John has a disability that makes it hard for him to find work. During the pandemic, he lost his job and he got divorced and he ended up in his car. He's told me, my problem is I've had a disability my whole life. I've basically been in last place my whole life. A program like this allows us to tell John, one, you're not alone, and two, your odds are not zero. It's an honor to assist in the development of a program that meets this need, and I'm grateful to work for a city that is offering this opportunity to its residents. And with that, I will conclude.
Okay, I need a tissue. Thank you. That was really powerful to hear from a resident in Bellevue and what they are going through and what they need. So thank you for that. I'm going to open this up to questions or comment. Let's start, we'll just go start with Councilmember Robertson and come this way.
Sure, thanks. Let me just say, I'm really excited about this. I'm glad it's on a quick clip. I think this is sorely needed. Thirty-seven thousand square feet of parking. What, I can probably run it through an algorithm of, you know, the parking spaces, how many square feet. But how many vehicles do we expect that to be able to hold?
Yeah, I think I should have named that, twenty vehicles.
Oh, twenty vehicles, okay. Of any size? So if they're all RVs, okay. What is the, do we have a count of the number of vehicle residents in Bellevue at this time?
Yeah, in 2021 in December, the city conducted a thorough count of vehicle residents and counted eighty-three. In the past year, I did a count of the number of residents that me and my coworker Nathan have served who are experiencing homelessness, and he and I alone worked with fifty-seven different individuals.
But are they, is that fifty-seven vehicles?
Yes, fifty-seven different vehicles.
Okay, and then this is, okay. So it sounds like the capacity will not meet the demand. I think it would be really helpful. And obviously, we need to get the pilot going first, but the goal should be to meet the demand. And by meeting the demand, we can help these folks. People who are living in cars are often different than the people who are living on the street. Not always, but sometimes though. They're more often to be employed, more often to have children, et cetera. I think it's really important that we help them. But it also would be very helpful to make it so that we get a lot of complaints about car camping in the city. And if we can meet the demand in a way that's really humane and provides the services, hopefully we can then start enforcing our no parking, our parking code so that that's not spreading out into the neighborhoods. So I'm a hundred percent behind this. And thank you, Councilmembers Zahn, for being the one that pushed this way back way. Thanks.
Councilmember Zahn, I'm sorry, I probably should have started with you first, but out of sight, out of mind. So I'm going to let you go now.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, I am super excited about this, and I thank my colleagues for supporting and getting this work going as well. Right? We are working together to really address homelessness and make sure that our response matches the need. And so I appreciate Councilmember Robertson's comments about looking at building the capacity. I know that when I visited the safe parking program in Vancouver, they've had their program for well over two years. And they do have more vehicles at their location than we do here. But I recognize that as a start with a pilot, that this is a really good starting point. And Nico, your comment about the person that you've been working with with lived experiences very similar to mine in having met some women from the Sophia Way Day Center that were living in their cars up in Kirkland and creating that pathway for them. I can only imagine trying to go to college and living in your car, which is what the woman that I engaged with up there several years ago. So I'm very grateful that we're moving forward with this. I appreciate the fact that we both heard from the community as well as from the folks with lived experience so that we really understand what this looks like. I know you talked about metrics. So do we already know what we're going to be measuring? Or is that going to be something where as we bring in the operator and we stand up the program that we're going to jointly develop what the right metrics are together? And so that's one of my questions. And then the other one, I think that absolutely working with the operator on the safety plan and code of conduct. Is there potentially funding for more sustainable as we move forward from either King County Regional Homelessness Authority or other grant programs? Because I know that we've got this funded just for the next two years. I wanted to better understand what the potential is from a sustainable standpoint. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Regarding metrics, we have identified the metrics that we want to start with. I think it's certainly possible that we may identify as the program develops more things that will help us to better understand how best to serve the participants in the program. But we do have some that we have already identified, including some of the ones that I've named and other things that will help us measure how we've connected individuals to the services that they need. Regarding sustainable funding, I think probably we don't, we're not able to say what KCRHA or others will be able to offer. But broadly, what I'm imagining is that this program gives us the ability to see how safe parking works in the city of Bellevue and try to strategically plan for what we'll do in the future to expand the program as needed or sustain it in a way that helps us to help those in the city.
Yeah, and we do continue to, just to add on to that, we do continue to work with regional partners like KCRHA as they're exploring safe parking in other parts of the county. They're very encouraging of the work that we're doing here, and so we'll continue to monitor other funding opportunities.
Great. Well, I look forward to successfully finding a partner to work with us on this. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Barksdale.
I appreciate the comments already made. Building on the evaluation or metrics piece, I saw in the agenda what you're measuring or evaluating. I would just include participant sentiment. I didn't see sort of the participant's perspective being included in that. You started out with the, to inform the pilot. Just want to keep that going. And I think a couple of those, or at least one of those, might be, you know, their sense of community, their sense of belonging in that space. So I have a few questions. One, are pets allowed, people experiencing homelessness who have pets? And then what are some of the, what's some of the thinking about how to foster community within that space? But also, and I think even more importantly, in the context of the broader Bellevue community so that it doesn't, they don't, you know, feel like they're not connected to the rest of the Bellevue community. And then one of the questions I raised before, just want to understand around, if someone's car is towed, what does that outreach look like to connect the dots so that they don't come back to their home and their home is not there?
So regarding pets, I don't want to speak too much for what the program operator will probably want to decide on. But what we've found so far is that most safe parking programs do allow residents the capacity to bring their family or their, including their furry family, over to the program. But that'll be something that we work on with the program operator to make sure that we're doing something that's both sustainable for the program but also beneficial to the participants. Regarding fostering community, this was actually the thing that I heard as I was sort of naming a lot of the technical details and talking through all the processes and steps that were following from program operators, this was the thing that they said, well, this isn't what you're thinking about enough yet, and here's what you need to do. So they told us that we need to make sure to bring community groups in, to foster things like meal programs or like to find opportunities for people to go out into the community and work in the community and meet people. There need to be events that happen and ways that people are coming in and interacting so that the people who are living in that program don't feel like they're behind a wall or set off from the rest of the community, but feels as though they're a part of it. Programs that haven't had as much success have found their participants in that situation where they feel isolated or as though they don't have a connection. So though it's just a starting point and certainly not the only thing that we want to do, just having community groups to come in and provide meals or provide some sort of session is a really good starting point.
To your question about communication around towing, so for any vehicle resident who is potentially moving into safe parking or who is not, who may be in violation of city parking codes regardless, Nico and Nathan are outreach team are in regular communication with, you know, with anyone that will talk to them. And certainly, in the event that there were any enforcement action, we would partner really closely with outreach and the police department to make sure that folks are really aware of what might be happening and that we're providing alternatives and helping to support their success well in advance.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I would just say, the more that we can leverage, because you already will have a way of connecting with them outside of the official, like, communication, so besides the ticket, whatever, whatever we could do to give them a heads up and the resources so that, you know, it reduces some of the anxiety about how to navigate a situation like that.
Absolutely.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, like my colleagues, I share their enthusiasm that we're bringing this forward. Very important, and certainly we want to do serve the needs of our community in this regard. Councilmember Robertson is absolutely right, having been a part of a safe parking program. Back when I was on the board of Sophia Way, we launched that program at St. Luke's. The vast majority were either going to school and working, which was, and then on top of that, it made it a little bit more difficult if the kids were with them or pets as well. So really, really something to keep in mind. I would advocate that we do allow that. And I really like the comments about trying to build some level of community there, although that's a bit of a difficult balance sometimes as I think, as your cloud bubble there showed, the sense of security is very important. At the same time, we don't want them to feel like they're behind a wall either. However, having spoke to some residents that were living in their RV or in their car, you know, the biggest thing that they were concerned about is being woken up in the middle of the night, right? Someone knocking on their window, telling them to move, or being woken up by whoever or whatever. But it's really critically important that they have that sense of security, and that means safety. So the safety plan, I think, is really important that we really drill down on that. And I think for the most part, all the key items are here in terms of give them a parking space, the restrooms, the showers, the 24-hour security, the housing navigation, the job financial training, mental health treatment, the substance use treatment if needed and required. And again, going back to the communities, I want them to feel like they're part of this community. On the other hand, I don't want them to be here too long. I want them to get on that path independence and to permanent housing as quickly as possible as well. So that's a delicate balance, and I look forward to some additional updates on this as we move forward, as well as this metrics piece that my colleagues have mentioned already as well. Then that's a real and critical piece as we launch this, understand what works here for Bellevue and then how we improve upon it year after year. Because what works well for Bellevue may be a little bit different than what works in San Diego or other cities that have had successful safe parking initiatives in their city. So I look forward to hearing a little bit more about what those metrics look like as well, as well as length of stay. I think that's, I think that I saw that in part of your metrics already. You're going to be tracking that as well. And then on slide seven, and I wasn't sure, you mentioned you spoke to like fifty-seven, I believe. Was that for this actual part of that presentation that you talked to fifty-seven folks in different vehicles? Or is that your count last time you did a count?
That's the count of residents that we've served who are living in their vehicles.
Okay, so the number of folks that you spoke to for this presentation, how many does that represent? That only one person said they would not be interested.
Of the folks who answered that particular question, there were fifteen who answered.
Fifteen, okay.
Yes, one said no.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Yeah, so look forward to further updates, but very excited as we continue to move this forward. And would love to get, being the liaison to the Human Services Commission, would love for you to present to the commission as well to keep them abreast of how we're moving forward as a city on this as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm so excited to get this going. And at the briefing that I had with you, I asked about metrics and how you're going to measure success. And I saw on the slide you talk about, you know, getting people into stable housing. So I just kind of want a definition of what stable housing is so I can fully understand. Also, looking at the overview of the distance from, of the parking from the building, are they going to be that far from restrooms or are they going to have restrooms closer to where they are? Because I think of myself as a child when I was camping and don't want to be that far away. And then can we have like a volunteer coordinator or somebody work with the people here that maybe we can get them engaged if they're interested?
Yeah, so with regard to the distance specifically, again, I think as I look at the site, I think of a couple different solutions, and I want to work with the program operator to come up with what would work best. One of which could be, say, putting a porta potty immediately adjacent to where the parking spots are. Because there will be a little bit of a walk, not a horrible walk, but, you know, a walk between their individual sites and where they would ultimately be using the restroom and showers and so on. But I do think that those sites are ideal. They're indoors, they're connected services. You go in and use bathroom, you can check your wifi, you can charge your laptop, all those sorts of things can happen at once. So that would be our primary site. And then what particular solutions we might implement for what to do in the middle of the night, say, we'll work with the program operator on. I agree, it would be absolutely paramount to have a coordinate volunteers, coordinate community participation. And I think that that's something that we want to make sure that our program operator, our program operator does. Question regarding metrics.
It was about how you define stable housing.
Right, how we define stable housing. Yeah, so certainly, one thing that we want to include in stable housing is congregate shelters. We're looking for situations where an individual is able to move into some unit or dwelling of their own or in another circumstance where they're sharing that dwelling or unit with a family member or roommates who's able to ensure that that's going to be something that they can continue to reside in. Different programs use different specific timelines around specifically how long one needs to be guaranteed housing for it to be permanent or stable or something that will, that is likely to last. But ultimately, we're looking at things like transitional living programs or their own leased unit.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I find that you are doing a good job talking to people, potential service providers, organizations that have experience. And there are many, many things that I believe we can do. These are human beings. They are no different than us. We look for different things to satisfy needs. You know, why do we do certain things? How do we behave? It's a combination of lots of stuff. And Bellevue is a great place. Everybody comes to live in Bellevue. So, but when they're here, you know, we want to make it possible because they have different requirements than we do. And I've talked to people, you know, who are homeless, who are here with their vehicle sleeping there because they find Bellevue is safe. It's a great place to be here. Nobody robs them. Nobody desert them. Nobody make them feel unsafe, right? So I think this is the bottom line. But at the same time, we have to recognize different people have different inhibitions and different likings. A lot of folks want some privacy, right? So to be safe, it's good, but you put them into an environment where they live with other folks. Some people love to be able to live with the people together, but some people don't. They want privacy. So it really depends on the situation. So, you know, as you see that each of us, Councilmembers, can give you all kinds of different ideas how would be the best for, you know, people to live in. Seven ideas already. If we give you one more each, it would be fourteen. But they're all good. The question is, how do we, how do we become flexible enough? How do we provide enough and enough differences so that we can handle a variety of things? So, but the biggest thing is, I believe, safety is the most important. And safety comes from many, many ways. And, you know, our police department is safe. Our city is safe. So in general, we are safe. So people already have that. But in the specific situation like we are talking about, there are many, many other considerations. And these include convenience, this include how welcome the city is. And these are, this include convenience, this include how welcome the city is in general, what kind of program we already have. You know, the city, we're working a lot of different things. They feel no different than we do. When they want to do something, it's going to be clean, welcoming. They feel like they belong and they want to do it, right? Rather than being intimidated, scared. So all these are different things the community should provide. So we cannot predict what they will be. So it's very difficult. But what we can do is we can do whatever we can control, what you can, you can provide in terms of this safe parking facility, right? So I think it's got to be individualistic, that you have to be aware, sensitive to what makes it to be a place where they can be here. Otherwise, they can feel, gee, I thought it's going to be safe for me. I come, I'm going to stay here for a few days. Suddenly, they find something that's going to irritate them, you know? And they're not going to be able to be, you know, more able to respond to some of these things. So you got to be very sensitive for that. So I believe that's why the organizer, the organization, the people who work with these individuals, very important. They have to be aware and sensitive when you work with them, provide ideas and change. So I think that's, that's good. And I feel that you are doing this, but it's just need to be more sensitive, more flexible, nimble, and give them the overall community of Bellevue. We support them. People like Bellevue, not just because it's safe. Yes, it is. But also they feel that we are listening to them. We're providing the needs that they are willing to stay here and survive here and hopefully it will flourish from here. That's what Deputy Mayor was saying. You know, we don't want them to give them bad experience. And in fact, it may get, make it worse. That would be the last thing we want to do. We want to make sure it's a positive experience, experience they don't mind coming because it's going to help them, make them feel better. And hopefully, from that, they will be able to do more and then get out of the situation. So I really like this program. It's wonderful. It's a need for it. And I think we're doing something that, as a city, that can enable our residents to be more independent and to do what we want them to finally accomplish. So I like that. But it's, it's not easy.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for wrapping up. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. Good conversation. I think, I do want to say that in talking with staff and working with staff and here and other places, I think the staff has done a great job and actually understands the, some of the things we're trying to tell you that you should be doing. And I appreciate that, and we have good conversations. What's important is the overall, the program and how it works and how, and the facility, how you organize it, and, you know, things you're doing. So to me, this is a really great step forward. We've struggled with this for a long time. We struggled with the homeless, you know, facility for a long time. We're getting, working on that now. And we, I don't think we have to spend a lot of time on, should we do A, B, or C or whatever, because I think that's out there. What, the over, the framework is really good. And my big questions are, you know, for the future, the capacity, what happens when the capacity over, doesn't meet the need, when the need is overwhelming? And I think this, again, something in terms of, in implementing things and making things happen as a city, we have to be aware of that because sometimes we get something in place, and we ran into that with the homeless men's shelter where we knew what we were supposed to do, we just didn't have the capacity to apply that. So we have to continue to look at what is the need? How do we, how do we meet this need? And obviously, we're going to learn as we go along. So I'm really, really pleased. This is something I've, you know, I think a lot of us citizens wanted to see this, all of us wanted to see this for a long time. And I think partly too is in terms of, the question is always, how long are these people going to be in this situation? We don't know. But again, you were not saying that as we did in other, like the tent cities and others is, well, you can stay 90 days and you have to go someplace else. We're working for the time comes when we can have capacity to move people from this and offer them another situation again. So I think, again, it's a great advancement in our approach and in our outlining things that will be successful because we're doing these things. We've learned from other things. And I think, I mean, it's always going to be catch-up until we get a balance better in terms of affordable housing and all these other issues. But just kudos for getting this put together. I think we've learned from a lot of cities, and hopefully they'll learn for us, from us. The main thing is, let's get it going and get it put in place. And we'll continue to have the conversations. And I know you're, we're all open enough to look at it as we're doing it now, and if something is better, we'll do that. But the main thing is, let's, let's get it going. Appreciate it very much. And I think this is going to be a huge change in Bellevue for these citizens. So thank you.
Great, thank you. And so that was just informational, so no action to take. And then we have another study session item that is pretty straightforward, which is cleaning up amendments and doing conforming. Don't know how to use the word conforming, is it noun or verb or whatever? But that's what we're doing. We're making it conform to what we already have. So Mr. Miyake, should be straightforward, right?
Yes, Mayor. This is an overview of the proposed amendments to the Land Use Code and Bellevue City Codes needed in response to recent city actions regarding, more specifically, the East Bellevue Community Council and the Council's role in quasi-judicial matters. So these are cleanup administrative actions that need to take place, and I will turn it over to Liz and to go ahead and Caleb to start the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. I, we are so happy to be here tonight because we get to complete something with this work. So many of you remember that we have talked about the removal of the EBCC from most of our documentation, and we also recently worked with the Council and the City Attorney's Office to remove counsel from the quasi-judicial hearings for conditional use permits and some others, process one and three. So in so doing, we were able to remove most of the references to those. However, we do have two areas where we still need to pick up a little bit of additional work. One is in the Shoreline Master Program, and that is a section of the Land Use Code, and it's one that we work with the Department of-
Ecology.
Ecology, thank you. I got stuck on that. Department of Ecology on that. So we've got a lot of process to make changes to the SMP, and Caleb's going to walk through what some of that is. And we also have some conformance amendments to the Environmental Procedures Section of the Land Use Code, and those will be updating how we apply SEPA, and that is mainly relating to the quasi-judicial portion of this. So I'm going to go ahead and move the slide. We are asking for direction this evening that you enter a finding of necessity for the Council to retain the processing of the proposed SMP conformance Luca and also direct staff to prepare the SEPA amendments ordinance for final adoption at a future meeting. And just to, you know, be ultimately clear, we did have conversations on both of these issues in the policy level when we first spoke about these. So these really are just conformance amendments. We're cleaning some things up, and these will, you know, by the time we get through this process that Caleb's going to describe, it'll be the last time you all have to think about these particular subjects. So I'll pass it on to Caleb.
All right, thank you, Liz, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council members. So for tonight's agenda, first, we'll provide some background on the two ordinances that were adopted by Council last summer, 6670 and 73. Then we'll go into the proposed amendments of the Shoreline Master Program and the SEPA procedures. And then finally, as Liz noted, I'll discuss the review process and the engagement that we've done so far for this. So first, we have ordinance number 6670. This was called the EBCC Sunset Luca, and it responded to the state legislature's termination of community councils last year under House Bill 1769, which removed community councils both here and in Kirkland, the last two remaining in Washington State. In response to this, this Luca removed any resulting gaps and ambiguities from the Land Use Code resulting from the termination of the EBCC. These included some specific provisions and requirements that were in the EBCC procedures and just other general references. And as Liz noted, these did not include any amendments to the Shoreline Master Program due to the additional procedural requirements under state law. Ordinance 6673 is called the Quasi-Judicial Appeals Luca. This was adopted on August 1st of 2022. This removed the Council's authority to hear appeals, quasi-judicial appeals for process one and three land use matters. Instead, all appeals are now directed to the State Superior Court. These did not include amendments to the Shoreline Master Program or the environmental procedure or SEPA procedures in the Bellevue City Code. And as such, we are proposing the following amendments to the Shoreline Master Program. One would be to remove all of the existing references in the EBCC. Again, some of these are more procedural in nature, others are just direct references to the body. And then the other would be to remove Council appeal authority for Shoreline Process One actions specifically. These only include Shoreline conditional use permits, and instead, appeals are directed to the State Shoreline Hearings Board, and then Shoreline Process One and Two remain the same. Because this is an SMP amendment, we are required to go through a certain process alongside the State Department of Ecology. This is called the Joint Review Process, wherein the city and Ecology will both solicit comments simultaneously, and then Ecology will also review those comments as well as the city's process and amendments to, for consistency with this Shoreline Management Act. The next set of amendments are for the environmental procedures. These are in the Bellevue City Code, Chapter 22.02. These implement all of our various requirements and procedures under SEPA, the State Environmental Policy Act. So these amendments just include a reference to type one appeals to city council, and then also, they also clarify the appeal process for when SEPA is required for projects. There are no additional amendments to these. They're just small references in a couple places. And for the BCC to be amended, this does not require any additional process with Ecology, so this can be adopted anytime after tonight's study session as a separate ordinance from the SMP. And finally, in terms of process, we have issued a couple of notices so far on this. First, for the notice of application on December 8th, and then an additional notice of public hearing on December 22nd, which under Shoreline Management Act has a 30-day comment period. The public hearing has been scheduled tentatively for January 23rd, and that is specific to the SMP procedure, or SMP amendments. The SEPA amendments, as I noted, can be adopted after tonight. Following the Council public hearing, we will submit an initial application to Ecology to, for them to review for consistency with the SMA. They will issue an initial determination of consistency sometime around February or March, following which Council can adopt the SMP amendments, and then we'll submit again for a final determination of consistency with the SMA by Ecology. And then we'll be all set. So after all of that, to conclude, we are seeking Council's direction to enter a finding of necessity to retain processing of the SMP amendments, and then to direct staff to prepare the SEPA amendments for final adoption. And I'll pass it back to the Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I just want to ask a clarifying question. You're alluding to, I think, that we could do some of this, the SEPA BCCA ordinance on consent?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe when we make a motion, we might put it that way.
Indeed.
Okay. So let's, let's go ahead and make a motion, and then we'll question or comment.
Happy to do that, Mayor. I move to enter a finding of necessity for Council to retain processing of the proposed SMP conformance Luca and direct staff to prepare the Environmental Procedure Code conformance BCCA for adoption at a future meeting on consent.
Second.
Great. So I'll start off, and I just want to thank Councilmember Robertson for her help on the SMP when she was the liaison for the EBBC. I think that, or EBCC, I think that was a, oh, sorry, I got it, something. I think that was a tough time, and you made it very smooth from that aspect. So thank you for, for working so hard to make sure that the community felt that they were heard and they were involved in the process, and we had a good outcome with that. Any comments or questions on what's been proposed here? Okay.
Let's do it.
Okay. And Councilmembers on, any comments or questions?
No comments, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are adjourned.